Welcome to your City Commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 PM, at midnight, and available for viewing on YouTube. Call to order, Pledge of Allegiance, followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Okay, it looks like we have three proclamations today. Okay, first up, let's see, it looks like Richard Gibson is here.
Ed Otto.
Ed who?
Ed Otto.
Ed Otto, okay, thanks for being here. The City of Leavenworth, Kansas proclamation. Whereas historic preservation is an effective way for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, strengthening local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for all Americans of all ages, all ways of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. Whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people. Whereas This Place Matters is a national campaign sponsored by the Leavenworth Preservation Commission, Preservation Alliance of Leavenworth, Leavenworth Main Street, and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, I, Kamala M. Leonhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim May, I can't read that, May 2022 to be Leavenworth Historic Preservation Month.
Thank you to the City Commission, and of course, we work with you on a regular basis to ensure that the historical preservation of our community is maintained. And we appreciate this opportunity and the proclamation. Thank you, Mayor. And we'll continue to do our best to support not only the commission, but the local community in preserving our historical preservation needs.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. And actually, just to shout out, if anyone's interested, there is two positions available, I believe, on the Preservation Committee. So just talk to the city clerk and you can sign up. Okay, next up, Brian Faust. Okay. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are vital importance just to sustainability in resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Leavenworth. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel of the staff of the Leavenworth Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the work and performance. Now therefore, I, Kamala M. Leonhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim May 15 through the 21st, 2022, to be Leavenworth Public Works Week. Want to say something? Okay, sure, sure.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. We have several public works employees here tonight. Eric, and Becky from our service center. Earl, who's our new Deputy Director of Public Works. I think you met a couple weeks ago. The theme for this year's Public Works Week is Ready and Resilient. Whether maintaining operations during the pandemic, the 24-hour snow and ice removal, to emergency response for damaged structures, and to late-night repairs of collapsed sanitary infrastructure, our public works team is always there. Our members care deeply for the community, and we will always be ready and resilient through anything that comes our way. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including 60 sworn members of the City of Leavenworth Police Department. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the calendar week each year during which May 15th occurs as National Police Week, and May 15th of each year to be Peace Officers Memorial Day. And whereas the names of those dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, there are more than 22,000 names of fallen heroes engraved on the memorial, of which 609 officers who were killed in 2021. Whereas the members of the City of the Leavenworth Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas. Whereas the citizens of Leavenworth and our leaders pledge to stand with their families of the fallen officers, the officers protecting our community, and the officers throughout the United States, and to honor their loss as they protect their communities. And whereas all officers of the Leavenworth Police Department are encouraged to turn on their red and blue lights for one minute every day at 11:00 AM from May 15th through May 21st, 2022. Now therefore, I, Kamala M. Leonhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st, 2022, to be National Police Week. Thank you. Thank you.
Very briefly, Mayor and Commissioners, on behalf of the men and women of the Leavenworth Police Department, I appreciate your continued support throughout the years. Very briefly, I would like to announce that next Tuesday evening at 5:30 PM, the entire police force will be on the south side of the City Hall. We haven't had the opportunity to take a department-wide photograph in a few years, so we're going to have the entire group here. You're certainly welcome to stop by and shake some hands and meet everybody. But at 5:30, we're going to, at 5:30, we're going to take the department photo, and I will announce the Police Officer of the Year and the Civilian Employee of the Year at the Police Department. You're cordially invited to come to that, and I'll send you a reminder email tomorrow. I'll come out, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Old Business. Consideration of Previous Meeting Minutes. Minutes from April 26, 2022, regular meeting. Any questions or concerns from my fellow commissioners?
I'm moving to approve the minutes from the April 26, 22 regular meeting.
Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Okay, passed. Second consideration ordinance. Let's see, here we go, right here. For 8086, zoning 604 Potawatomi from Neighborhood Business District to Light Industrial District. And I just need, I guess, a roll call vote on that.
Well, I could say.
Oh.
Madam Mayor, Commission, just a quick reminder, this is the former June's Northland, rezoning to accommodate Stripes Global, which is anticipated to bring between 50 and 60 jobs to the community. There have been no changes since the first reading.
Madam Mayor, if I would just add, at the first reading, you'll recall there was a staff report and minutes of the planned commission meetings that reviewed the golden factors and the status for approving those. And I just want, it should be important that those are reflected, at least in the record and the minutes here, that those were reviewed by the commission in making its decision. And the decision you make tonight follows the recommendations, if that is the decision, or not, based on those golden factors.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Did anyone have any questions? Okay, roll call, Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Commissioner.
And I, Mayor Leonhard, aye. New Business, Public Comment. Item is not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Public comment is limited to two to three minutes, and no action will be taken by the commission on public comment items. Please state your name and address. A sign-up sheet will be provided in the commission chambers for anyone wishing to speak. Fill out the sheet with requested information when you enter the meeting. Did we have anyone for public comment? No? General Items, Mayor's Appointment. I, Mayor Leonhard, move to reappoint to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Mike Bogner, to a term ending May 1st, 2025. And just need a second.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Hengula.
Aye.
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 Okay, passed. Okay, Establish the Leavenworth Transit Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commission. At the March 15th City Commission Study Session, the commission provided consensus to direct staff to establish the Leavenworth Transit Advisory Committee with the primary purpose of advising the City Commission on general matters related to the new on-demand transit program in the city once it begins, once we receive the vehicles. The LTAC will operate on initial two-year term and will be evaluated by the commission prior to the expiration of that committee, which would be two years from tonight, May 10th, 2024. And we did that because we're evaluating the program. So let's evaluate the program, evaluate the committee, and then make any changes over that time. And at that point, hopefully, we have a successful program, and we can codify the committee and put it into formal terms. In order to ensure that full and adequate representation was on the board, members shall be appointed by the mayor and approved by the commission, just like we do any other city boards, with seven members. The seven members voting would be comprised of a member associated with Leavenworth Guidance Center, who is our partner in this, our grant partner in this, our dispatch partner in this, the United Way of Leavenworth County, which is an umbrella organization that can be a spokesperson or representative for the nonprofits in our community and our county. Welcome Central or the Interfaith Community Shelter of Hope, trying to reach those most in need of public transportation. We wanted to target the higher education entities that we have in the community, get represented from that. I did expand it from Kansas City, Kansas Community College, or St. Mary's, just in case, you know, we, someone didn't want to participate from one of them. And then three members at large, at the discretion of the mayor and approval of the City Commission. So we would reach out to the organizations listed here and then hope the public reaches out, or if you have, commission has suggestions for Mayor Leonhard, try to get this committee seated as quickly as possible. And of course, then we'll, the next step would be, when do they meet? Time and place and frequency? Who from the city staff is going to staff those meetings? But that's all stuff we can, we'll work on once we get the committee formed. So again, the mission of the group will be to report on, update, and make recommendations. No binding action. It's an advisory commission to the City Commission on all items related to transit program, including but not limited to use, performance, personnel, budget, routes, all those types of issues. Again, it'll be staffed by a city staff member, and we'll develop the schedule to best function for advice to the City Commission. So your action tonight is to approve the creation of the Leavenworth Transit Advisory Committee.
Anyone have any questions?
Just the current status of the vehicles.
So we have gotten some updates that I think that they're in process, but we've heard that on a number of city vehicles. So soon as we know something, we'll let you know.
And see, the county's ordered some too, and it's the same.
Kansas City too.
It's in pros, they say in process. So, yeah.
Everybody's having that problem.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay, make motion.
I'd like to move that we establish the Leavenworth Transit Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Hengula.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Next up, Resolution B-2313, approving a loan from Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund for Leavenworth Waterworks.
Madam Mayor, Commission, I'm going to ask Joel Menken, the General Manager of the Leavenworth Water Department, to come up. Very briefly, this is something that the city does periodically. It goes back to the fact that the water department doesn't, cannot own property. And so the city actually owns property, and the city technically owns the system. So when they go to do something like borrow for an expansion project, it comes before the City Commission. If they're going to purchase a piece of property, dispose of a piece of property, it comes to the City Commission. So again, we've done this fairly regularly over the last 10 years that I've been here. But I do want Joel to talk a little bit about the project and what they're doing.
The basic project is to install an additional water storage tank on our water system. It's to complement the existing 140-year-old stone masonry tank that we have, in good shape, not hurting anything. But our risk and resiliency study we did last year indicated the need for additional storage to just back our system up. So when the Leavenworth Penitentiary Project came up, they were intending to put a half million gallon elevated storage tank on their system. And I said, hey, why not, you know, contribute your avoided costs to this project and get it all done at one time and help out the community as well? They loved the idea. They liked it, you know, very well. We're looking at financing the project, our portion of it, through a loan from the SRF program administered by KDHG, as mentioned. And the reason Paul's given is, basically, I don't know why we're coming to you because none of, the revenue from the utility are going to be repaying the loan, providing insurance for the bond payments. None of the taxing authorities in the city is being affected whatsoever. So we're just asking you for agreement to allow us to do the project and finance through a loan from the state.
Those statutes go back to the mid-1930s.
Right, I thought it, yeah, I talked to Paul Kramer about it earlier, yeah. It's from way back then.
There's even a, I mean, there is a stat, part of the statute says that all the responsibility for the water utility is with the board.
Yeah.
But it's not worth adding.
Yeah.
We're just, like KDHG does the other thing.
Okay.
If the City Commission's in agreement with allowing us to go forward with this, we would appreciate it.
Okay, sure.
Do you have any questions about?
Did you have, when you have a question, go ahead.
Yeah. Sir, I expect rates are going to have to rise somewhat in order to repay the loan. Is that true?
Marginally, we'll probably be more affected by inflation than anything else in the next couple of years. We had to take this into account and were programming the project.
Okay, if, if rates do go up to help pay for the, pay for the loan, will we expect to see the rates go back down when the loan is paid off?
20 years, possibly.
Is that 20?
20.
It's a 20-year loan.
20-year loan.
Well, I may not be around 20 years from now.
I bet I will be either.
But there may be some young, young citizens who would like to see them drop. Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Did you have any questions?
No, listen.
No, no question. Okay, then I just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution B-2313, approving a loan from Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund for Leavenworth Waterworks.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, begin voting, Commissioner.
Aye.
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 Okay, passed. Thank you, Joel.
Appreciate it.
Uh-huh. Thank you. Okay, next up, Consider Bids Received for the Trash Bag Contract.
Madam Mayor, Commission, our Public Works Director, Brian Faust, will handle this. When we do get down to going through the three options presented here, I do have to add one from a conversation I had with Commissioner Martin, just to throw out there as a other potential option. So I'll turn the item over to Mr. Faust.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The item before you this evening is to consider the bids we received for the purchase of plastic trash bags for distribution in the fall of 2022 and the spring of 2023. The city does purchase 1.15 million bags, or 23,000 rolls, each year for spring and fall distribution. Bags are also used for spring cleanup, new customers, sold by the city, and at the service center, and for departmental use. The bid was advertised on the city's website, and we did notify 10 different manufacturers by email of the bid. Bids were received on April 22nd, and while we notified 10 firms, we did only receive one qualified bid, and it was submitted by Central Polybag in the amount of $287,000. The cost is nearly double from what it was last year from the same supplier, and is more than double the budgeted amount of $130,000. The number of bags in our specifications did not change. It was identical bid as last year. And we do include a chart on your policy report. It kind of shows the low bids for the previous years. In discussions with Central Poly, we asked why the price doubled. Some of the reasons they listed related to staffing shortages, the increase in the petroleum-based resin prices, as well as difficulty in actually obtaining enough resin to produce the product. At the current time, in talking with Central Poly, the city does not feel that rebidding is in the best interest of the city. We are, been made aware of a 5% to 10% increase in cost over this. And currently, we do not have enough rolls for fall distribution. So the options for the commission to consider, reject the bids for plastic trash bags and rebid later in 2022, and hopefully have a better bidding climate. With this option, bags would not be available for fall of 2022. We could accept a bid from Central Poly in the amount of $287,000. This would provide bags for both fall and spring. We could also award the contract to Central Poly in half that amount. In talking with the supplier, they said they would hold the roll price the same. So if we decided to purchase only half to get us through the fall, they would honor their bid. And so that price would be $143,500. I think the city manager has another option.
And so Commissioner Martin asked about the possibility of purchasing a significantly reduced quantity, even from the half, something around maybe like 5,000 bags, and making them available sort of on a first-come, first-served basis. So you would get 5,000 rolls. You would set up something at Hay Market or the community center and, or the service center, set up a couple of different dates, and then residents would come at that point and come down and pick up bags until they were exhausted.
If they can come down.
Well, that's it, and it's.
I don't like that idea.
I don't either, because, yeah, you have a lot of people that can't, they, you know, they depend on us to, or even Lyons or whoever, to deliver to their house. And I don't think that's really fair to all the citizens. First come, first serve.
I do like the idea of, you know, whoever's fastest to get down there. I do like the idea of going with half of them now.
I do too. Just do the fall.
Looking at, looking at how things look in the, before spring.
If we did that, we would probably start looking at prices probably early in 2023 to give it enough time to see if there has been a change in resin or petroleum or staff shortages. There'd be no point in looking at it again in, you know, three months. So that would give us that time. If you did elect to buy them all now, if there's a question about where those funds come from, it would probably need to come from the city's general reserves.
Yeah, I'd rather not do that. And then in the, and then in the spring, the most we would pay is what we're paying now, right? Is that what you're saying? They would hold that amount for?
No, they'd actually, right now, they'll hold the price at $143,500 for the half order.
Yeah, for fall.
For fall. But if, as time goes by, they would have that option of changing their bid.
Got it, okay.
So we'd likely go back and rebid and try to get more competitive.
That's it, that's what I was going to ask. We could rebid then at that point.
Yeah, I'd like to favor Faust.
How immediate does this have to be? This decision have to be made?
So if we want to make the fall bag delivery, if we want to make that option, then we have to do that. They're also only holding this price for, it's only good for X number of days. They've already advised us that if, that, their prices have already risen 5% since they gave this bid, but they'll honor this bid. But if we want to do the fall, then we have to order the now because they have to be produced, delivered, before we can move forward.
See, it's, it's been suggested to me that, by a member of the Waste.
Right. Right, Refuge Task Force.
Yeah, the Waste and Refuge Task Force, that we wait until they can make a recommendation to us. I'm not sure how quickly they can do that.
We're, the timeline on the solid waste task force is maybe to the commission in August. So they just put out a survey, want to give that plenty of time. They're doing good work, and they've been moving pretty quickly. But if they did something in August, we couldn't turn around a bid, a purchase, delivery for a fall delivery. Is that correct?
That's correct. They get it, you know, they're looking at a number of options, but depending on August or September, when they, they make a recommendation, there would not be time for anything in the fall.
I would support...
Do we have, I'm sorry.
I would support purchasing half now.
I too, for the fall.
Do we have to wait until August for the, the Refuge and Waste Committee to make a recommendation on this particular issue?
So they're not tasked with making a recommendation on bag purchase. They're tasked with looking at the future of solid waste collection much more broadly. You know, whether we do bag limitations, poly carts, special pickups, that's their focus. They haven't really focused on bag delivery.
Okay, so then I just need a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the award, a contract to Central Poly Bag Company in an amount of $143,500. This would be for the purchase of half the rolls, 11,500 rolls per Central Poly. They would hold the bid price for half the rolls, and this would provide enough for fall delivery.
Second. Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Next up is Consider Award for Rebid of the 741 Potawatomi Drainage Project.
Mr. Faust, you don't look like that.
Again, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioner. The item this evening is to consider a possible contract award for the rebid of 741 Potawatomi. The area around 741 Potawatomi does experience significant flooding during moderate to heavy rain events, and has been previously labeled as Orange Fence Project Number Four. The current system of enclosed piping, open ditches, and air emblems has degraded to a point that the carrying capacity is not adequate for the water that comes through there. As a result, water does pond in the side yards, and they actually get very deep there. In 2021, the city hired Wilson and Company to design the improvements. This project is a part of a much larger program that will upsides and replace stormlines all the way to Three Mile Creek. Bids for the original project were opened on March 8th, excuse me, March 9th. The low bid at that time was $595,000, which was significantly higher than the engineer's estimate. And based on staff's recommendation, the commission, at their March 22nd meeting, rejected the bids and directed staff to rebid the project. Staff did work with Wilson and Company to incorporate changes to the project. The rebid was advertised in the Leavenworth Times and at Drexel Technologies, and bids were opened on March, excuse me, May 4th. The city did receive three responsive bids, with the low bid from Kissick Construction. Kissick's bid was $499,665, while the engineer's estimate was $549,760. Kissick Construction is an established firm, and they're the firm that actually completed the Thornton Street Project back in 2019. City staff would inspect the work on the project. The City Commission does generally award a contract to the low bidder if the bid is less than the engineer's estimate and whose evaluation by the city indicates that the award is in the best interest of the city. And so staff does recommend that the commission accept the bid from Kissick Construction in the amount of $499,665 for the rebid of 741 Potawatomi Drainage. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
This looks a lot better.
Yeah, definitely, a lot better. Do you have any?
This is certainly one that's had a lot of attention. The residents out there have really suffered in this area. That whole system, drainage north, south, and that area has a lot of problems, but this should really improve that area.
Did you have anything?
No, I'm very familiar.
Yeah, yeah, sure. You listed you. Okay. Okay, then I just need a motion.
I move to directly accept the bid received from Kissick Construction in the amount not to exceed $499,665 for the rebid of the 741 project, Potawatomi Drainage Project.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Hengula.
Aye.
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 Okay, yes. Thank you, Mr. Faust. Okay, Senator, you doing that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I move to approve the claims for April 23rd, 2022, through May 6th, 2022, in the amount of $1,212,972.72. Net amount for payroll, number nine, effective May 6th, 2022, in the amount of $325,306.11. No police and fire touches me.
Need a second?
Second.
Begin voting, Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay. Our meeting's complete. Let's go around and see, Mr. Kramer, did you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of updates. After a rainy week, baseball and softball were started this week. Our numbers are really good. They're up about 35 participants from the last pre-COVID year. Last year, we actually had a spike because the fort didn't have programs, neither did Lansing, so we had a lot of kids from those communities in our program. But we were 293, I think, in 2019, our last pre-COVID, and we're up to about 320 this year, so leagues are looking good. The splash park out at Hawthorne Park, if you've been out there, the sewer line is installed. The crews for the construction company have been out there and done some grading, and then they filled in some uneven spots. And so they're going to, they let that get rained on a little bit and weather a little bit. And then they have crews, much like the crews that put, put up like a Starbucks, that it's all they do, they have crews that this is all they do. So they were on another location, and I believe we're next. Oh, Steve Grant's not here, I was looking for Steve. So in May, they should be out there installing the features and all those issues.